When we called in, special meeting for Stark County to order, it's October 21st, 2021. It's 9:00 AM. First of all, we do the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with no other, creative justice,
Okay. First of all, the agenda, is there any changes to the agenda? Leave the public hearing for Stark County at delinquent properties, price minimums will be changed or moved to November 2nd meeting due to we need to notify the cities before you can act on that, so that'll be moved to November 2nd meeting. Is there any other changes or anything? Now I'll look for a motion to approve the agenda with that removal of the first item.
So moved.
Have a motion of a second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. Next we'll then go to the certificate of significant community support for the city of Richardson. Mayor Rolle, you want to speak on that?
Hi. Well, mainly, I guess, for us to get our funding and stuff, the North Dakota rural development, I guess, wanted your guys' okay to move forward with our street process. So, I guess, they want your okay saying that it's all right for us to do, or you're in favor of us doing our streets.
Okay. Do you want to, for the record, could you state with you, for the names?
This is Mike Farley, a commissioner, and this is our attorney, Olivia Krebs.
Okay. Okay. Anybody have any questions on this?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I would make a motion to have the chairman of the board sign the letter of support as requested by the city of Richardson.
I'll second that.
The motion is second. Any discussion? Not, then a roll call vote. Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
And Commissioner Artthod is absent, and that chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on our agenda then would be for the liquor sales hours, and what we need is a motion so we can follow the state laws, or some changes to state laws, so we're in compliance with the state laws on that, so.
And I can give you some background on how this came up. The liquor, the hours to sell liquor have recently changed, and so I, myself and auditor Richard were fielding quite a bit of emails and phone calls about whether Stark County had a policy, about whether they could, and as far as I know, we don't have a policy, so my advice to them has been to follow state law, but I wanted to make sure that we get it clarified at the meeting, that those hours are going to be acceptable to Stark County. So, I think it's changed to an 8:00 AM selling and then 2:00 AM close, so, yeah.
Amanda, do you know what our current licensing agreements are regarding open hours?
I don't think we have one. I've looked at the liquor licenses that we issued to individuals, and they don't have any selling hours, and like I said, auditor Richard and I have looked, and I can't find a policy in Stark County that prohibits an individual liquor establishment, prohibits their hours or restricts their hours, so I've been going off that information that we don't have a policy and they can follow state law.
Just maybe one other question on that. Has your office, over the years, had any issues with open hours on liquor license that you recall?
Not one that I can recall, so.
I suspect that our license holders are following the state open, liquor open laws as they are permitted.
I would think so, and then obviously every municipality, like, you know, Dickinson or South Heart or Bellfield, they can make their own laws within their, but this is just for the ones in Stark, so.
What we're doing then is essentially cleaning up our own rules or.
Yeah, and I think just making it clear to the individuals who have liquor licenses in Stark County that we have went on record stating that we are, you know, allowing them to follow the state law, and we don't have any further restrictions or prohibitions on it, provisions.
With that discussion, I'll offer a motion then to, that Stark County liquor license holders will follow the, follow or mirror the state laws regarding liquor open hours.
Okay. Have a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Give a motion and second. Any other discussion?
Yep. So, for the closing times, I know for the cities, it's up to the cities to decide if it's 1:00 AM or 2:00 AM. Do we want to be pushing that 2:00 AM in the county?
I think we, I don't know that we have a lot of them in the county. We have, you know, the one out at the golf course, the county line, I think there's some wedding venues that have liquor licenses, but I don't, I think most of them are selling alcohol, some of them are probably providing pouring, but they're pretty small. I think there's a little club in Sheffield, maybe? We don't have a whole lot of them.
You know, being the industry I'm in, I would hate to see people thinking, well, you know what, we run out to the golf course now, we got another hour out there, or I'd hate to see the fact that then, okay, well, Dickinson, up to this point, none of the liquor holders have decided or thought that we need to be open that late, and then all of a sudden we're pushing, pushing that agenda back onto the city liquor license holders.
I think the cities can, I mean, Dickinson has had their own rules and regulations in place, so does South Heart, so, but South Heart is 2:00 AM, and they're, you know.
Yeah, on the weekends, I think, whatever it is, but yeah, I just, that's just my opinion, is I'd rather see it stay at 1:00, but.
I don't know that it ever, I don't know that it ever was at 1:00. I think the majority that we're getting right now is the 8:00 AM opening. I'm not getting anything on the closing time, I guess. I'm getting everything on when they can start selling, yeah.
I understand that, but now, the way the motion is, is to follow the hours that the state allows, and so.
Well, was there ever any, and I don't know, since I've been here, I've never heard of any formal policy in place that Stark County ever stayed at 1:00 AM, I don't, or, you know, so I don't know that we even have a policy that says they're to close at 1:00 AM.
If we pass this, then we will.
So, this would basically apply to only the licenses we control, so the Sitton Bowl and Taylor, Taylor controls that one?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you.
But, but then, then the bar that's south of Taylor there, whenever they have that new little bar that's south of Taylor there, little ways, that's still, I believe.
South of Richardson, you mean?
Yes.
The Wicks.
Yes, yeah, that's what I meant, Richardson. You know, then they could be open too, so people could be leaving Taylor and running out there for the last hour.
I think you're gonna, I mean, that's just the way the laws allow, you know, but it's not my decision, I'm just letting everyone know that we've been fielding calls on it, so.
Yes.
I'd only say that for the purpose of Stark County license, I think it, by following the state rules, there's less confusion in regards to how we enforce our license holders. And Commissioner Marsh makes an excellent point. I think that if you look back, there was always that, you know, with Bismarck Mandan time zone, bars would close at one in Bismarck, and, and it was always suspected that everybody then jumped in their cars and drove to Mandan for one more hour. I don't know if, if that was really a fact, but was always something that was out there.
Any other discussion? Other discussion? Okay. Roll call vote. Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Nay.
Commissioner Artthod's absent, and the chair.
I'm on the phone.
Okay. How do you vote? Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Okay. Next we'll go to the Stark County auditor salary.
So, what I wanted to bring up and speak to you about is that I felt like in the previous budget discussions and commission meeting, the proposed approval salary of $80,000 was done, not based on facts and the information provided, and some of the things that I wanted to present to the commission is that by putting, we are a larger county in North Dakota, and by electing to put me at $80,000 instead of the 85 that I had asked for, you are putting me in, according to some of the surveys that were done, in the lowest 18th percentile of what an auditor would make based on our size of the county and the responsibilities for having a larger county. There was also a motion made back last year by the previous commission that, that says to approve the starting salary of $82,000 for the first six months for the auditor position. My issue with this is, I was brought in here to do things differently, to be more transparent, to do a better job, to provide transparency to the public, to be here for the public, and to provide management over the auditor treasurer's office so that they are efficient. I was brought in here on the pretense that things needed to change, and I have already provided and attributed a lot to, I stepped up to the plate and did the job that I was hired to do, even though I was asked to step up after just two months to be the acting auditor. I do not think that, based on the information I provided you, the previous elected officials assumed the full salary of the newly elected official, and the previous department heads that assumed a position from a former department head came in at anywhere from about 6% to 8% less than the previous department head. Where you proposed to put me at is a 13% decrease, and I just don't think, and based on the information I've gathered, that that is an appropriate move on part of the commission, and it kind of is showing biasness towards my position. When you guys did the election to discuss, when you did the meetings to discuss whether or not the auditor position should be appointed or elected, a lot of you were for the auditor position being appointed because you said this position is too important, and you want a qualified candidate, and you want say over who is in that position because it's too important to Stark County, but you don't think that it's too important to Stark County to give a salary that is deserved of a person that does meet those qualifications and has stepped up to this position. That is all I have.
Ms. Richard, so, the new information that I received going through the counties, and I don't know who assembled that, if it was.
Joetta Den, our human resource person.
It's really irrelevant to me, but the one question I have is, the Stutzman County auditor still an interim position? Do we have any more information other than it's interim and the posted salary is 87,254?
I personally don't know the auditor from Stutzman. As far as I know, based on the conversations I had in my meetings, they're interim because they have to run in their elections still.
Okay. And so, I guess the point I'm getting to is if that moves from interim to permanent via either appointment or election, is that the number, or is there a different number as far as the salary in that position? If anybody knows, if you don't, that's fine.
I'm really not sure. I think that's up to their commission at that time.
Okay. Thank you.
So, on this Gallagher report thing here, it breaks it up by hourly wage, and I'm trying to figure out, what are you at an hourly wage now?
So, at $80,000 divided by 2,080 hours, which is what we go by for hourly wage, that would put me at $38.46 an hour.
That's at the rate, at the rates that we just gave you was?
Correct. Yep.
So then if we do go to what you're requesting, what does that hourly wage come to?
$85,000 would come to $40.87 an hour. In order, I think the discussions that we've had with these surveys and these salary surveys to see where people lie, Joetta is correct, and if you want to retain employees and you want to get good employees and pay them for the job that they're doing, you really need employees to be in that 50th percentile. And based on the 50th percentile, if you wanted me to be in the median, I would need to be at $89,000 for that job. And all of our other positions that we've looked at with the salaries and, no matter what department, none of them are, is in low, I, I think I can ask Joetta, none of them are, isn't a low of a, she's right here, percentile.
Yeah, two department heads over here.
Sorry. As low of a percentile as you are talking about putting me into. Nobody is that low.
So now, if, if you would have ran for this position and you would have beat whoever the auditor was before, what would the wage you would have come in at then at that point?
Oh, I'm sorry, 82 for the first six months and then 92,000.
So if somebody would come in, you're going to be running, and if somebody comes in and beats you, they come in at the salary you have then at, at that point, or?
That's how it's been done with our current elected officials. I think, I mean, it does come down to what that person is willing to accept, too. I think that they have a right to stand up for their salary as well.
When you were hired, the salary you were given was, and what promises were there made?
There wasn't promises made, but when I was hired, I was told that I was going to be training for probably, you know, basically as long as possible to just get things up and going, to learn my position, and it was implied that that would probably be anywhere from six months to, to the end of this year. And Lynn was going to retain the auditor position until that time, and unfortunately, with the circumstances, I got two months of being a deputy auditor before I stepped into the responsibility of the acting auditor, and then as of the last commission meeting, you put me under the elected official umbrella of being your full auditor.
So, you came in at?
Chairman Stuntick?
Yes.
Go ahead, Dean, or I mean, go ahead, Brian.
No, go ahead, Carla.
On that percentage scale that you guys are looking at, is that based on how many years of experience on that percentage scale?
So, Carla, when you were talking about years of experience, are you just counting years as an auditor, or are you counting external experience? Because I have a lot of management experience outside of being an auditor. There's only 50, is it 54 auditors in North Dakota? You can't expect for somebody that is coming in to have been an auditor.
Yes, that's what I'm seeing, is, you know, on that auditor salary on there, you know how many, you know, like, is their years of experience they twist those salaries of being the auditor for their company?
That wasn't, I guess that wasn't listed, it was just listed of what the salaries are in all the comparable counties, and their county, kind of their county size. Joetta, did you have any comment on that?
On the county survey, they do have a hire date on there, but you don't know whether they were hired as the auditor, or whether they moved up through there. I would say years of service does have a bit to do with a salary scale, but it's mainly based on competency, so.
And also, with the counties, I don't know how you go with years of service, because some places, positions are appointed and some are elected, so I mean, it would vary, you know, stay wide with that.
Yeah.
Well, again, I think we go back to the process, so when the position was vacated a year ago, the commission passed a motion, $82,000 offered salary for the first six months. I don't think there was any intention at that point, it's not spelled out, that the salary would go down after you're on the job for six months. Advertised the position at $82,000, we weren't capable of attracting candidates that jumped out at us and that anybody wanted to do. So, I look at it also from number one, we went through a budget process on this, we had three meetings that, that equated to an $85,000 salary, and I look at the comparable counties. I'm not going to look at Cass County or Ward County, because they are larger counties, there's more responsibilities, there's more people, but if you get into our slot, you know, the Stutzmans, the Richlands, the Morton Counties, and those kind of things, the $85,000 is, is very much justified, and quite frankly, that's where I think it needs to be.
And I just want to point out two things. One, according to the statute, once the, if there's an official essentially kind of in that elected.
Go on, please.
I think it's on. Maybe I'm just not talking enough. It's on.
Number two.
You can't reduce the salary, so just let that one be known. And I have consistently said, and I will continue to say, that, you know, when I look at putting people into my office or hiring someone for my office, we are not competing with Burley or Cass or Grand Forks or Ward, those are bigger cities, they have their own draws, there's, there's different aspects of that. We are competing with Williams and McKenzie, because we are in that oilfield country, and there are not as many draws here. If you're looking for quality people, I don't, I don't even know that you're looking at the Stutzman, or that you're looking, you're really looking up at like McKenzie and Williams, at least in my office, that's, that's the price salary that I have to compete with to draw good applicants to my office.
Mr. Zander?
I really don't have any disagreements with any of the conversation with that Karen's brought forward, but going back to compensation that we've been paying for this position, do you have a number for what our consulting or training person was paid during the period of 2021 up to date?
I guess I don't have an overall total. She was paid by the hour, and she was paid at an hourly rate of, well, $92,000 divided by 2,080, so it would be, I'm sorry, I don't have my calculator on me.
Little over $45.
Yes.
What number? I'm sorry. Little over $45.
She was paid about $45 an hour.
Okay. But you don't have a total for the period of, of service, do you, from?
Total hours that she put in when she got.
Well, but there's three months this year that she was the auditor, so you'd have to kind of prorate that since the auditor, and, and I also believe that the, and I agree with what you're bringing up, which is, we look at it from a total compensation package, and so I think a legitimate question would be, if the Karen's salary goes $85,000, what are we paying in addition to that to bring Lynn in as a consultant, and that number's going down and down, based on my experience.
And that's what I'm trying to get at, commissioners, is that going forward in our budget coming up, are we going to have any of those consulting fees attached to your department?
As of right now, there is some in that slot for Lynn. I do think that Lynn is an asset for history as far as that goes, and she is very knowledgeable, and I didn't want to do away with it completely, but at the same time, Lynn is helping with the redistricting process coming up here, but other than that, when I mean redistricting, I mean she's helping with the addressing, because she was the original person that had inputted that into voices. Next year is a totally different year and a totally different budget, and.
And that's what I'm trying.
And that's where we're kind of at with that.
Okay. Has your 2022 budget reflecting any of those additional costs, or is it just precautionary item on your budget?
That was the one item I did allow myself to put on the budget with a line item for Lynn to consult, if for some reason it is needed, and I didn't put a large amount in there. My budget is very, very scaled back, I just wanted to have something there in case she does come in, because it's not fair for her to not get compensated if something does happen, but I didn't have an intention, and I don't even think that it's going to necessarily, I mean, I don't think we're going to get to that point of. I mean, I don't think we're going to get to that point of what was budgeted. I just wanted to have a little bit of a buffer.
What is that number that was budgeted?
Currently budgeted, it's twelve thousand dollars. And I mean, we can definitely scale that back, but I think everybody has some sort of buffer in their budgets and different line items based on unknowns. You kind of have to do that. It's a budget. And the rest of my budget is very much minimal.
And you mentioned redistricting. That's going to be done before 2022.
Correct. That is going to be done this year.
That, those expenses are coming out of 2021, so. I just concerned that when you add all of that in, it, it certainly appears that, and it's not your salary of eighty-two, but when you, when you add in thirty thousand dollars for, you know, a consulting, if, if that's the right term to use for, it, it, it gives the impression that, you know, the county is spending a lot more money on accounting auditor's position than is truly reflected in, in your salary. So that's the only
For this year, it is going to be, I mean, it's obviously different. I didn't start till February. Lynn was the auditor. She was not salaried. She did not want to be salaried. She wanted to be able to get overtime. I will be going to salary and she was paid at the full salary of coming in for her period of being interim auditor. There is also the whole thing about, for a while there, I was doing not only my deputy auditor position, I was also doing the payroll position and I was also doing half of the auditor position, so.
I think we're all pretty much aware of that, but yeah.
I just came in and did the job that was asked of me and I feel like I should be compensated based on not only my management experience, but also the job that I have done and the fact that I do come in to this position with accounting, business and finance background. And realistically, you're competing against me going and working in the financial districts. And I, there is jobs out there and I think that you need to take that into account that I do have qualifications for a lot of higher jobs in the pay scale.
So my concern now is, and do I feel you're worth it? Yes. There's other department heads that are probably in a lower scale. So then at the next meeting, are we going to have these guys coming in and saying, because we already did our budget meeting, we passed our budget. Are these other department heads going to say, you know what? We need to relook at our budget?
Well, we had three meetings. We had three budget meetings and every one of the budget meetings, this salary was proposed at eighty-five thousand. It was at the last final adoption of the budget meeting that this was changed from eighty-five to eighty. So every department, we added a full meeting to this budgeter, budget process. Every department head has had the opportunity to bring it forth through, through a meeting directly with the portfolio holder and the auditor and then to a public proposed meeting and then to the preliminary budget. Those three meetings and this one came in, everyone at eighty-five thousand. And it was at the last meeting when we adopted the budget that it went down to eighty. So I, you bring up a valid point, but my point is that we've had three opportunities. There's been three opportunities to address each department head and so.
I'm just saying, we did vote on it already.
We did vote on it, but the budget is allowed to be changed. That is a budget. I mean, Jim Hope said it in the last meeting and I just don't think that all the information was maybe presented. I didn't think that I needed to justify to this point that I am worth it to the commission for eighty-five thousand. And as far as, you know, the department heads coming forward and requesting other changes, you also have to realize that it's not just a department head. I am also an elected official like yourself and I will be running in that election next year. And I, me, the state's attorney and the sheriff, they have all made more than previous department heads. And we also have to pay for our campaigns and we also take the chance of not getting reelected into our jobs every four years. And that, that needs to be considered. Other department heads do not have that additional responsibility.
Well, the, the salary and the cost of the campaign are two inseparable issues. So I guess I would ask Amanda a question before I make a motion. Is that if we make a motion to adjust the auditor's salary at this point, is that a valid motion? Do we have the ability to do that?
Yeah, the budget can be amended at any time. It's the mill levies that have to be set by the specific date. So yeah, the budgets can be amended.
So having heard that, I move that we adjust the Stark County auditor salary for the calendar year of 2022 to eighty-five thousand dollars from the eighty thousand dollar approved at the last meeting.
I have a motion. I have a second.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, you have a second. Any other discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Zander?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Arthod?
No.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, next to go to attorney fees. Commissioner Ken Zander, you? You have any comment or are you asking for attorney fees on this?
I would, I would. I think the position that I've presented is well informed by all of the commissioners and so I don't have any additional comment.
Okay, I know that we've, it was brought up last meeting on this, but I know there was an issue with, about the conflict on the voting on that too. And I guess that's up to the commission too, if we're going to allow people to vote on it. I think there's a conflict on this issue with attorney fees.
I, when you is that in reference to a vote that was taken on?
Our last meeting, our last meeting.
Last meeting pertaining to me?
Well, pertaining to two commissioners that voted on it, they're asking for attorney fees on that. I guess that, that they believe it's a conflict. I guess if we need a motion for the full commission, if they're allowing to vote on it.
I think they should be taken separately. So I think, you know, if for Commissioner Zander's.
Amanda, I can't hear you at all.
No, the mic's on, so I'll try to speak a little louder. I think they should be taken separately, like they're listed on the agenda. So the first order of business if, would be for the commission to vote on whether Mr. Zander is, whether you guys agree that he could vote to essentially allow himself to be reimbursed. That's in forty-four oh four, I think. I don't remember seventeen. It, it have it listed in that letter that I sent out. So that's the first order of business. First, you have to decide whether he or Commissioner Arthod will be able to vote on their own attorney's fees. After that, then however you decide, you, I've given you the options that I see are available to the commission. I would note one thing though. I, at the July meeting, when this first, I think, kind of came up, and I didn't realize this until yesterday because I got the official meeting minutes, the vote at that time was to not approve the attorney's fees for Commissioner Arthod and to revisit it after a policy had been put in place. That was the motion. That motion still stands today. So the other thing I think you have to deal with is whether you're going to abide by that and say, we're not even going to vote on this today because the last motion that was put in place was that we will look at it after a policy was put in place or you rescind that motion and then deal with the issues here today. So I, I think that there's a couple of things that need to be taken care of first.
Well.
Yes.
If, if it simplifies things for my fellow commissioners, when it comes to any discussion or motion regarding me, I will choose not to vote.
Okay.
The, the letter you wrote us or the opinion you, you forwarded to us, just to clarify, it was your opinion that four of the five commissioners were eligible to vote on each of these motions, excluding the commissioner that would be the subject of the motion? Or is it three of the five would be eligible to just to vote?
I, I guess I probably didn't clarify that. I, I think because they're, they're separate and they're, they're obviously two very separate requests and they're two very separate issues. I, I think that four of the five are allowed to vote on the one that doesn't correspond to them, so.
Okay, thank you. It was also referenced, and I don't know, go ahead.
Chairman Franchek?
Go ahead.
Amanda, you said there was a motion made. I think there was, wasn't there just discussion about looking into a policy?
No, there was a motion. I have the email. I, I thought I had printed out the actual motion or the actual minutes and I do have them in my email. I'm trying to find it right now. But no, there was a motion made and I, I looked at it yesterday.
Commissioner Arthod, it was sent out by Lana yesterday to all the commissioners' emails. The motion was.
There's been no, no work done on that?
There's actually been a lot of work done on it. It was supposed to come in front of this commission many times, but it hasn't. So I, I don't know why, but yes, it's done.
Part of that was on, on me because for the September meeting, we were one day late getting it onto the agenda. So we, we said we were going to put it onto the, or is it the, anyway, we were one day short coming in on, I believe it was the September meeting. And then we were ready to, to bring one in or the proposed policy that you've worked on, that Joetta's worked on, to bring it in under the osmosis that we would do the policy first and deal with the reimbursements, potential reimbursements. Second, and that was not acceptable to one of the commissioners and so it was dropped at that point because we were going to, or it was the wish to bring the reimbursement conversation first.
Chairman Franchek?
Yes, go ahead.
I was the commissioner that didn't want it brought forward because I had got, I had, I was asked, what do you, you know, what do you want on that? Do you want seventy percent? Do you want eighty percent? Do you want sixty-five percent? This bill for me, if this bill for me is, it's more about the process. It's more about the process of everything I went through and had to get an attorney without any of the commissioners backing me. In fact, one of the previous commissioners provided false information to one of the people that did sign against me where we could bring him back easily because he told this person that there was eighty emails on complaints after and so emails never existed. We had prior administration that I didn't have any HR to go to because the person that was in charge of HR lied and said he wasn't in charge of HR. There wasn't any guidance whatsoever. Ms. Engel said you even made the comment to me that you knew it was wrong, but you didn't want to step up.
Well, I said I would have handled it differently and I would have handled it differently and I've expressed that to both yourself and Mr. Zander. But hindsight is 2020 and last year, the cloud that was hanging over Stark County, it was not a good environment. So yeah, I would have handled things differently, but I wasn't the state's attorney at that point.
You know, and this, and this is also a cloud that's still hanging because it's, it's personal money that never, ever should have been.
Well, and I have a question. I, I asked.
Have to go out and acquire this to fight to be an elected official? And if we have proper HR, which I mean, we just did it.
Why weren't these attorney's fees brought forward at the meeting? The meeting where the, and I'm not, and I've already gotten Commissioner Zander's answer and I know that, but I
Can I interrupt for just a second? With, with all due respect to everybody, if I'm looking at the agenda, the conversation is supposed to be in reference to me and I think you've gotten sidetracked.
Yeah, I, I will withdraw the question.
I apologize for interrupting you, Amanda.
No, you're right.
Commissioner Zander, you're right. Let's do yours.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyhow, you know, I, I think this, all of this discussion has gone on way too long and I think that State's Attorney Amanda, you had, you had some ideas on, on your own with suggestions on how to proceed on this. And I, a former county commissioner made the classic comment here not long ago about kicking the can down the road. I think it's just time to come up with a conclusion on how we're going to proceed and go forward. And with that in mind, I would just suggest that we look at the opinion and options that Amanda had brought out, at least pertaining to me. I don't want to jeopardize any, any position that Commissioner Arthod might want to take. And so that's really all I got to say.
I have another question of the two new commissioners. Commissioner Marsh, were you ever provided the investigative report on this incident?
No.
Remember, Mr. Marsh?
I have seen nothing, nothing.
So I mean, you're asking two commissioners to vote on something. They've never been solid, the results of this investigation. I think these, these things should have been brought up the year when these, the commissioners that are actually involved and were involved in this. And I guess bringing this up a year later and having two commissioners vote on something they haven't even seen the final report on it, I have issues with.
If I can interject, our state's attorney has given you some options that would remove?
Sorry, sorry, Ken.
I'm just saying that the state's attorney has identified some options and on some ideas on how to proceed to conclude this. And I think the best way to go forward and, and, and take the commissioners, as, as Chairman Franchek stated, the new commissioners on the board basically haven't had an opportunity to really analyze the entire matter. So I'm, again, I'm going to defer to the state's attorney and her recommendation or options or whatever.
Like I said, in my opinion, I think you have three options. You can vote to approve, you can vote to deny. Or if you want to take a look at, you know, all of the information, I think that you can enter into potentially some negotiations about it. And, you know, maybe those, maybe those negotiations are, don't come to any resolution and that's just the way it is. Maybe they do. As far as I see it, those are the options that you have.
Besides our motion, but it needs to be rescinded though about making a policy first.
Well, that one's specific to Commissioner Arthod. It, it was motioned by Commissioner Marsh, seconded by Commissioner Messer to revisit paying Commissioner Arthod's legal fees after a policy is put into place. So that one is very specific and I, I think Commissioner Zander made a good point when he said, hold on, we're talking about his right now and we are talking about his. So that one is specific to that motion. So, um, that one is specific to, that motion was made specific to Commissioner Arthod.
Okay, then that would discourage for that.
Chairman, may I, uh, address? I, I'm just gonna clarify a motion.
Just a minute, Commissioner, do you have some?
Yeah, I was told here earlier this week, I don't, I guess I don't know who's talking or what's going on with. I don't, I guess I was just, I was told earlier this week that both of our bills were gonna go through mediation. So, um, who discussed that, or where did that come from?
I have no idea who would have told you that. I guess my, uh, my opinion was pretty specific that these were the options that were available.
Okay.
And, and, and that it would have to be decided at the meeting.
This falls so now too far as the public.
I missed Richard's that, when I called in to talk about some budget, that we were gonna go through the, maybe the village and mediate our bills out.
Actually, Ms. Commissioner.
Because I hadn't seen any emails, or I hadn't heard any discussions.
Can I? Actually, Commissioner Arthod, um, what I said to you was, is that mediation was sent out in an email as an option. And, um, Commissioner Zander potentially would like to look into that option with the village, since it does not cost the county more money. And that, that option is also, um, for you. I mean, it's not just one or the other. If that's what you decided to do, I don't see why you couldn't propose that. I didn't say that they were both gonna go through. And, um, as far as the conversation goes, you told me that you wanted a decision made today, and you weren't interested in mediation.
Cause I had more, I had more questions about mediation and if we have to hire a mediator and what that was gonna cost the county.
I have a question. Oh, this is not a public hearing, so do I allow public comments on this, or?
I believe that's at your discretion.
Discretion. I'm just asking about a motion, not, not your bills.
Okay, go ahead then, go ahead.
You just stated, uh, about a motion that was still open. Um, when this came up on agenda, yeah, I went back to review the, um, video of the meeting. And just to recall, I think the motion is, is not correct in the minutes. Because it's specifically stated, Mr. Zander, he said, so let's make a new motion. Bernie is on the right track, and he's offering to table it to August meeting and to establish. And you said, I'm not putting words in your mouth, am I? Bernie, no. Establish a protocol for input from all the county commissioners and how they would perceive this to apply in the future and retroactively. Bernie said, well, that's, I, I have a question mark, that's kinda wordy. You said, I don't know else how to do it. Mr. Messer, you said, so you don't want to appoint a committee? So you want to appoint a committee to make a recommendation to the next meeting? You said, Mr. Zander, not to make a recommendation, you were talking about a policy. And then, Mr. Messer, you said, yes, a recommendation of a policy or whatever. And you said, yeah. And then, Mr. Messer, again, you said, I can support that. I wanna get behind us. I want to get this behind us as well. And then, Mr. Franchek, you said, is that a motion, Commissioner Zander? Are you making that a motion? And then you said to Secretary Richard, did you get it? And you said, do you want me to repeat it? Which it should have been repeated, and it wasn't. And you said, no, I'll make that a motion, I'll make that motion, I'll make that a motion. And you said, I'm fine with what you said. I have a motion, do I have a second? Well, what was the motion? And, and in the minutes, it says it's a motion, but clearly, if you listen to the tape, there is no motion.
This is what I have, these are just the minutes that I have that were approved. And that is a motion by Commissioners Zander, seconded by Marsh, to table discussion until the August Commissioner meeting in order to establish protocol policy for this topic. I think that's what you just probably addressed, right? And then there's a second motion in the meeting minutes. That's, uh, a motion by Commissioner Marsh, seconded by, uh, Commissioner Messer, to revisit paying Commissioner Arthod's legal fees after a policy is put into place, and that one carried. So, did you go that, were you able to go that far into the
Yeah.
Meeting? And, and is that, I'm going by the minutes that I have, so, yeah.
Give me a second. I have to read ahead here, but yes.
Well, I think.
You speak up to the mic, please.
I'm sorry. I think at this point, I would, I guess we're just talking about Mr. Commissioner Zander's thing right now. But policy's gonna be policy. I think we need to, you know, that's different than what we talked about in the last meeting. But whatever we, we decide is gonna be setting a policy. And so I think we need to set the policy and go forward. And if it has to go back to the, whatever happened, but I, I, I don't think that we're gonna be jumping back and forth. And each situation is different, I understand that. And I guess, I don't know how you're gonna set up a policy, but.
Well, huh, just to, that's been my position since day one, ir- you know, that we need to have a policy before we deal with this issue. Cause, and again, based on, uh, the, the opinion of the state's attorney, if we, if we, uh, went on the strictest interpretation of the policy as it is vaguely worded right now, there would be grounds to say zero. And so, uh, that was the point here. Let's make a, a, a policy that we can recommend to the full board, not that we're gonna force down the full board's, uh, uh, action, that we could bring to the board and say, here's a policy recommended based on input from the state's attorney, based on in- input from Juata at HR, and here's a policy.
And so that is ready?
It is. Can I just interject?
Chairman Franchek, and I think that policy is putting the cart before the horse, because we can make a policy for something that happened before the policy. And I am against that policy anyway, because I feel that that ties to hands of commissioners in five years, 10 years. I just think the commissioners are protected by the century code. And every circumstance could be very, very different on why they would have to get legal fees. And I don't think that policy protects them.
I guess I haven't seen the poli- I'm sorry, Commissioner Arthod, but I, I don't, I haven't seen the policy, you know, to, to agree with you on that. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
You know, we have century code. I mean, and it's very important that we have century code for elected officials and county commissioners.
Commissioner Arthod, the century code states though that this.
Money the water to get a policy in there also. If something happened down the road and a commissioner did need to get an outside attorney, which I don't think would happen anymore. But again, we're kinda going off Ken's bill and that issue, but I just think that policy, I don't agree with. That policy is almost trumping century code. And I just think that's a bad precedent to set for any commissioners coming up.
Well, I'm the one who crafted that policy, and I disagree, because the state's attorney's position is to protect the legal advisor for the county. There's nothing in the century code that says that we, the sen- the state's attorneys are specific in attorneys for individual commissioners. And at times, and it's happened in other counties, the state's attorney's position is going to conflict with the commissioners. And at times, the state's attorney may have to sue the commission. It's happened, and that is.
I gotta, I gotta interrupt. We are so far off this agenda. And I would just only a comment in, Leslie brought up the, uh, motion. And, and Amanda, you stated your position on that motion back in, when was it? Sep- August?
July.
July? Well, in nowhere in that discussion was there any discussion about me. That discussion was brought to the table by Commissioner Arthod, and that's, and so I'm just saying, for the benefit of, of everybody here, including Commissioner Arthod, let's get back to the agenda and decide wh- what is the proper way to go forward. And Commissioner Marsh, I've never seen that policy either.
Well, it's because we were told we didn't want it to come forward. So it's, we're ready, I notified the people, so we don't need to throw that out there. But for anyone to make the in- the inference that we're, we have the capability of bifurcating the, your situation from Commissioner Arthod's is mistaken. That there's, there's no way you can bifurcate those, th- and separate them. They are not directly, but they're joined at the hip. And that's my position. You can outvote me however you want, I'll live with the results.
I, I, I don't disagree with what you just said, Commissioner Messer. I don't disagree at all. But I didn't make this agenda. And I'd like to, uh, respect the chairman's position of, of the, because essentially, it's, it's, it's the chairman's agenda. And I, I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do or work with, uh, commissioners individually, commissioners at a group. I'm willing to, um, visit with, um, anybody that, um, when it comes to specifically me. So, I think, again, I'm gonna go back to, uh, the, uh, opinion or that, uh, our state's attorney offered in. You know, I don't even feel like I'm, I should be even speaking here, so.
Okay. If we, the, the, the attorney, one of the state's attorneys, uh, options was to a mediator. But if a mediator does this, and it still would have to go through the commission for final approval, when did her?
Uh, yeah, I discussed that, and I, what my thought was, is that the commission, if, if my options were, you can approve, deny, or you can enter into negotiations. If you enter into negotiations, I think, uh, if that's the first vote, and that's how you decide to go, then the next vote, you'll have to, um, decide as that, um, you will allow whoever the individual is, and I think it needs to be someone from the county with a mediator, to, um, have the, the co- the commission will approve that individual to make the decision on, uh, any monetary monies that may be reimbursed up to the, you know, full attorney fees amount. And then we're not coming back and back and back over for, you know, numerous, um, meetings. You just give them the authorization to get this settled.
Well, I'd hate to have a third party dictate the financial obligations of this commission. We, we don't defer financial obligations, uh.
And, and I guess that wasn't my, uh, my point was.
I realize where you were coming from. You were saying, suggesting mediation as a possibility to where you could bring a proposal.
Well, I, I actually thought that the commission should appoint someone from the county commission to be the opposing party, and the mediator just helps facilitate the conversations. That's really all that is.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? I guess I'd look for some type of motion on this, if we don't want to do it through mediation, or if we wanna vote on the attorney fees.
I guess, but then again, we're setting a precedent, but I guess if Commissioner Zander is willing to work with a mediator, I guess that would be my motion.
I, I think that's fine, and then the next motion needs to be who you're going to appoint from the commission. And I think my suggestion was that it be Commissioner, um, Chairman Franchek, because he's the chairman. But I, you guys are the deciding board, and you can certainly decide who you think would be the most appropriate, uh, to represent the county, um, on the county's, essentially, county's behalf. And I know that's putting you at conflict with each other, but you're at conflict with each other every time you vote on something. So it's just whittling down the process.
Just, uh, can I make a comment regarding that point?
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I'm, I'm just bringing this out so that it's clear to everybody that, um, my, my position would be that you're putting, uh, Chairman Franchek in a very difficult position. Uh, I've served for practically, uh, going on eight years now with Mr. Franchek. And over the years, we've had our agree, agreements and agreements to disagree. So, um, I think it's, it's unfair to place him in it. Uh, he, as, as Commissioner Messer and Commissioner Marsh earlier pointed out, they really don't have any background in this. And I think that they would, uh, come with a more, um, and again, I, not any disrespect to, to Chairman, but, uh, a more of a, you know what I'm saying, so.
Chairman Franchek?
Yes.
And I could see, I mean, and I, absolutely not any disrespect at all, but I think we need to be careful who we put, because there's two commissioners that already voted no.
There's also commissioners that voted yes.
Put them on a mediation when their vote was a total no. And I do agree with Commissioner Vander on the fact that it does put, you know, Commissioner Marsh and Commissioner Messer were not even around. And yet, I mean, it would put me at a disadvantage. I mean, as a commissioner, be on there, I can understand that, because I want my bill paid. So for me to be on Ken's or Ken's to be on mine, I could see where that would also not work. So I don't know how a commissioner, delegated commissioner wouldn't be somewhat biased.
Point of order, we don't have a second on this, so let's get a second if we're gonna discuss it further.
Have a second on the motion, then.
Did you wanna reinstate, just re-say the motion, or did you want me to re-say the motion? We're just trying to clean up the minutes a little bit for.
He's making, Commissioner Marsh made a motion to go into mediation on the attorney fees for Ms., for Commissioner Zander, correct?
Thank you, Chair.
Right.
Is there a motion to second? No motion to second. Motion lack, dies of lack of second.
If it's appropriate, I'll, uh, put my position out there. I want the policy first, uh, negotiation second. The more I learn, learn of this, uh, the state's attorney does represent the commission, not individual commissioners. And it's, it's, it's a very, very unfortunate situation. You're right, I, I wasn't here at the time, but, um, I just, uh, I'm not comfortable, um, you know, expending those monies at, at this point, um, without someone giving me a better reason to do it at this point, so, sorry.
Any other comments?
So that was a motion?
Nope. That's just the comment.
So we're kind of at a deadlock here, what are we gonna do now?
Well, I don't.
Like.
Think you just either make another motion on either approving or denying, or you just move on, and that, then there's nothing. No action that's taken, essentially.
Okay. Look for a motion then to approve or deny the attorney feels, the fees for Commissioner Zander.
I would make those separately, like either make a motion to approve.
Or denied.
The outcome's gonna be the same either way, it doesn't matter.
I would move that, uh, we deny Commissioner Zander's request, uh, for reimbursement of legal fees.
A motion, do I have a second? Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
I have a second, okay. Any other discussion? Roll call vote then. Commissioner Messer?
Aye.
Commissioner Marsh?
Aye.
Commissioner Arthod?
Excuse me, I, what was the motion?
To deny the attorney fee, fees, or fees for Commissioner Zander.
No.
And Commissioner Xander, you abstain, or? And the chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next, then we move on to attorney fees for Commissioner Arthod, then. We have a motion out there that says we'll need to put the policy in place before we can move forward with this, and we need that, rescind it, or?
If you wanna go forward on it today, I think that you do.
Ken, I didn't make either one or a second.
Excuse me, Commissioner Franchek?
Yes.
Um, I believe at this time, I will, from what I've heard on, about mediation, I really feel with this policy. Who made this policy?
Well, I, I wrote most of it.
In charge of making this policy, or who put the policy together?
Our state's attorney, Amanda Engelstedt.
With, I put the majority of it together, and then it was, um, sent to Commissioner Messer and, uh, Joetta, because that was what we were tasked with doing.
And for point of clarification, it's not a policy, it's a proposed policy that would come in front of this board, either for approval, modification, or, uh, denial, so.
Oh, so now, it's, now it was for approval or modification?
Always been that way.
Anytime we have a policy come forward, it, we begin to change it to how we wanted before we approve.
We had somebody up at the podium already earlier at the meeting that basically confirmed that, so.
Well, then on the agenda, I guess for everybody's sake, this policy, my bill and the policy should have been on the agenda first, but here nor there.
We attempted to do that.
The motion on it for the policy was strictly for your bill, and that's as state's attorney stated earlier.
That, that's what the minutes that were brought forth to the committee and approved reflect, and that's the official record, and that is what I am going off of, so.
Well, this is Commissioner policy, I understand that, it was for just myself, Chairman, but it's a policy for all commissioners, not just a policy for me. It would be a policy for all commissioners in the future.
Right, that's correct.
I guess I'm just very, you know, I get a call about mediation, we have this policy, no one, I don't know, I guess I haven't seen the policy emailed to me. I've never had a chance to even review the policy.
Is that, was earlier you said you weren't for it, that you saw it, you weren't for it, so now you haven't seen it, or?
Well, I was just told, I was just told it was gonna be for a fifteen, fifty percent reimbursement, that's all I was told, and I said, well, I'm not for that. So no, I just, I have not seen the whole policy, and I'm really worried that we're going backwards in transparency than forward, because there's a lot of things getting done again, behind closed doors, one commissioner, nobody's getting emails about information.
The way this policy was to go forward is the same as all of the policies.
Come backwards, and with that, I'm, as of now, I'm gonna withdraw my bill, because I'm very disappointed on how this meeting has been organized and put together, so I am gonna withdraw my bill, and I will let you know at a further notice here in the next two months when it'll come back.
Well, again, we need to make accurate-
My bill is withdrawn.
I don't know if we act on that, but-
Big disappointment.
I'm not gonna let inaccurate statements, uh, be the rule of, of, of the day here. The fact of the matter is, this commission said, let's go, uh, let's put a policy together. Uh, we've worked on that policy, it was ready to submit. I did a courtesy call to Commissioner Xander saying the policy is ready to submit, uh, and that, based on a, an agreement that we had, that the policy's gonna come in, and then we can deal with reimbursement. And then all of a sudden, your position changed, so if we want to talk about transparency, let's make sure we bit, put that out on the table as well. And so the policy didn't come forth because there was no agreement to, to move, uh, after it, and I said the ball's in your court, so that's where it's at. I, I, I'm offended by anything about transparency, that's, 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 that's a very inaccurate statement.
Let me to comment book, would you want eighty percent, would you settle for seventy-five, would we do sixty?
Yeah, that's a conversation, that's a, that's a valid, legitimate conversation to have. I'm sorry.
You know, this percentage, like I said, isn't not based on the money, it's based on the process. And I know we don't want to go backwards anymore, but when someone is talking about this amount of money, and what happened to them as a commissioner, and what the previous administration did, that gives me the right to go back.
Can I get a minute?
Any one of you commissioners sitting at that table, if this would have happened to you, I would have been behind you a hundred percent.
Commissioner Xander, do you have a comment? Commissioner Xander, do you have a comment?
That department is now running, we almost had an IT shutdown in Stark County. We lost our emails, we are days away from being ransomed. Because of that department not being managed, that department now runs smooth, it saves seventy days, eighty thousand dollars a year because they run on a three-man team instead of four. The hours Commissioner Marsh and I put in for IT to catch everything back up, that was not done. It was a huge, it was a huge value to Stark County.
Commissioner Xander had a comment, Commissioner Xander had a comment, you're, I think you're-
Backup, that was bad to me. And as Lynn Lee stated at that meeting, he said we as a county should be scared. And we should have been scared back then, and he was right, because look at all the hundreds of thousands of dollars we're paying for IT right now.
This, this doesn't do with the attorney fees, as we discussed earlier.
And there wasn't any guy-
Commissioner Arthod, this doesn't do with your attorney fees, and then Mr. Xander had a comment, I'm letting him talk to him.
So, uh, thank you, Chairman. Um, I'd just like to, uh, point out, I think the motion to deny, um, is, uh, inappropriately done, because we still have the motion on the floor regarding the July motion. And, and so, I, I think we need to clean up previous motion before we, uh, jump into to a new motion. And, uh, Amanda, refresh my, um, memory of the, I believe it's July, regarding the motion I made, uh, Mr. Marsh seconded concerning-
So, the, there's, what I have is, there's a motion by Commissioner Xander, seconded by Marsh, to table discussion until the August commission meeting in order to establish protocol policy for this topic, motion carries. Next motion that I have in the minutes is motion by Marsh, seconded by Messer, to revisit paying Commissioner Arthod's legal fees after a policy is put into place, motion carries. Those are what the-
So-
-official minutes reflect.
I, again, all I can say is that I think we need to take care of business in order and, and, uh, follow through with the, the, uh, proposed policy, um, come to an agreement on that, and then move forward with, with the, um, items that are on today's agenda. And well, I was gonna make a motion, but we already have that motion, we need to, we need to-
I mean, if, if you, if we're looking for a motion to bring the policy in front of this commission at the next meeting, we can do that. If we're looking for a motion that we have to rescind, uh, I don't know which one we're talking about rescinding, but if we want to, that's fine. I'm all for getting this process going, I'm all for getting the policy done, so whatever legitimacy has to be done, let's do it, I, uh-
I want to see the policy.
I, I don't think there needs to be a motion on that, it just needs to be put on the agenda for November, and then the policy brought forward, like all of the policies in the past couple months that Joette have been working on, have been placed on the agenda, presented to you, and then you guys have made comments on what you did like, what you didn't like, to amend, approve, or deny. So, it, it, this, this policy that we're kind of, that's the subject of today is no different, in my mind, than any of the other policies that have been brought forth through the summer while we've been trying to clean up some of our HR, uh, and work, workbook policies. Uh, that was, that was the intent of it.
So all I'm gonna say then is that we need to take care of that motion, and if we can vote on it now, um, the July motion, and, and that motion was voted on, it was approved, and so I'm gonna ask the, um, Commissioner that led that, Mr. Messer, if you have that motion available, and can you bring it forward?
The policy.
The policy?
The proposed policy is available, it can be, be emailed out this afternoon.
And, and, yeah. And so I would also say that you need to rescind your previous motion.
Which one?
To pay the attorney, to pay the attorney fees.
And that's what I was thinking about it, but you kept saying that we have to take care of yours first, and this thing came up with Carlos' thing, and that's why we pushed you ahead of it. So, whatever you guys want to do.
So, do, um, do we have to rescind either one of those? And if you rescind, does the individual who made the motion have to do it, or can, can another commissioner, uh, make that motion? I think, I think we can move, based on what I see, we can move forward right now without addressing either one of those, uh, motions, if we get the policy out and get the policy potentially adopted at some point.
Well, at this point, you've voted to-
Just a second, State's attorney had a comment.
At this point, you guys have voted to, or you all have voted to deny Commissioner Xander's, uh, attorney's fees. If you want to have the policy in place before you approve or deny the attorney's fees, then you would need to rescind that previous motion. The other motion, I think, can just stay in place, um, because it, it was specific to, um, Ms. Arthod, but once you get a policy in place, then you can revisit, um, Commissioner Xander's, if that's what you choose to do. So those are your options.
Okay, so let's bring the policy forward for review and approval, or denial, and then, uh, potentially revisit, uh, some of these.
Okay.
Chairman Franchek?
Yes.
I agree, can we, um, all get an email or get a copy of that policy and put it on the next meeting, so we all have the chance to actually look at the policy longer than one minute before we have to decide to make changes to it, or do something with it?
It'll be on the agenda for November second.
We can, we can send out the proposal, we can send it out this afternoon. That's, that's, that's where I was sixty days ago.
Okay. Any other discussion or matters?
Um, well, like, I just advised, the previous, the previous vote was to die, to deny Commissioner Xander's attorney's fees, so I, you either have to decide now if you're going to stick with that, or if you're going to revisit that after the policy is put in place.
Well, he would have the opportunity to bring it forth again, or no?
I would, I would say probably not, I think it's cleaner, um, if that is the, what you want to allow to happen, to rescind that and make a new motion that says both individuals' attorney's fees will be, um, talked about, or, or looked at, or decided on after a policy is put in place. Because at this point, right now, you've just denied Commissioner Xander's attorney's fees. That, those are your options, I mean, that's where it's at, so. And I agree, things need to kind of get, um, maybe cleaned up and clarified, because right now, I think there's kind of a, a mess.
Didn't, wasn't there a previous vote on Commissioner Arthod's, too, that was, didn't pass easy also?
Correct, and that's how that whole, this whole thing came about, she, it was, um, it died, or it was a tie, so it was not passed. And then the next motion was to get a policy in place, and then revisit her attorney's fees. And that was, again, from the minutes I have, that you guys have approved, that was specific to Commissioner Arthod. And I, and I think that's probably because hers were the ones that were the subject or on the table at that time, so.
Any other discussion? I think we just can move forward with this policy and bring it forth on November second, and move on from there, then. If that's all, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. If it was opposed, motion carries.
Hey, Ken. Xander? Is this your code here?
Well, I consider, I think you could probably bring it, someone could bring it back and say, now that we have it in place, we'd like to allow him to revisit and stuff like that. But you just said, could he bring it back, and I, I don't think he can, I think it's, yeah.
Okay.
So.
Okay, maybe it's gone already.
I'm trying to.